Morning, Nelson.
Thank you for joining the Boston's zoning commission public hearing which is being held virtually to ensure the continued safety of the public staff members and the Boston's only commissioners. The open meeting law requires I notify the public that this virtual meeting is being recorded. Please be advised that an audio and video recording of this meeting is being made. At this time, I'd like the take a little time to have the interpreters introduce themselves.
Thanks, Jay. We'll go New, then Carla, then Jardine.
Thank you, Cyrus. Morning, everyone. My name is New. I will be your Vietnamese interpreter for this morning meeting. Xin chào mọi người thì tôi sẽ hỗ trợ hôm nhật sang tiếng Việt cho mọi người vào cuộc họp sáng hôm nay. Thì trong cuộc họp sáng hôm nay để mà được hỗ trợ sang tiếng Việt thì mọi người vui lòng chọn hình quả địa cầu ở bên dưới màn hình. Và chúng ta chọn ngôn ngữ tiếng Việt nhưng mà tại vì chúng ta không có ngôn ngữ tiếng Việt thì quý vị vui lòng chọn ngôn ngữ là Japanese. Là để được nghe hỗ trợ sang ngôn ngữ tiếng Việt à? Xin cảm ơn mọi người. Một lần nữa là xin mọi người chọn ngôn ngữ tiếng Nhật. Tại vì chúng ta không có ngôn ngữ tiếng Việt để mà nghe tiếng Việt. Xin cảm ơn. Thank you.
Thank you, New. Who's next, Cyrus?
Carla, over to you.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Carla. I'm the Spanish interpreter. Muy buenos dias a todos. My nombre es Carla Rivera. Yo soy la interpreta hispana. En este dia vamos a tener el servicio de interpretación. Pronto vamos a estar dando las instrucciones de cómo se puede conectar para poder escuchar toda esta reunión en español. Muchas gracias. Thank you.
Thank you, Carla.
Bon, good morning, everyone. My name is Jardine, and I'm your Haitian queer interpreter. Bonsoir, bonjour tout le monde. Nombra ustedes Jardine. Este muy bien que apetecido por nos a que la haitiana pueda venir mañana. Si ustedes buscan interpretación, les y documentos o sutil web capaz de pese su creola haitiana por interpretación. Merci.
Thank you, Jardine. Is that it, Cyrus?
That's it, and the interpretation rooms are now open.
Okay, thank you. At this point, I'll take, I'm gonna take a roll call of zoning commissioners. Jill Hatton.
Present.
Michael Nichols.
Present.
Michael Demela.
Present.
Nelson Arroyo. Nelson Arroyo. David Ma.
Present. Sorry about that. That was on mute.
Yeah, Jay as well. This is David Ma.
David Ma is here. Ayesha Miller. There, Ayesha. Ricardo Ostrich.
Ricardo just put in the chat that he had to leave and he's coming back in to fix the tech issue.
Thank you. And Jay Hurley. Are you sure you're there? All right, we have, we can start the meeting with six. Well, I'll note when they Ayesha and Ricardo, come on. This is a nine o'clock public hearing. This is a hearing before the Boston zoning commission consider a petition for the approval of map amendment number seven, seven, zero, and a petition for approval of the planned development area number one, four, seven, the Mary Ellen McCormick Phase One redevelopment. Redevelopment. The hearing was duly advertised December twenty first, twenty twenty three, in the Boston Herald. In the Boston zoning commission hearing on petitions, the proponents will first present their case and subject questioning by members of the commission only. We are taking support in opposition at the same time. If you're planning to testify, please take the time to verify that your computer microphone is active. Click the hand icon on your zoom control panel. This will signal staff you would like to speak. When your hand is raised, your hand icon will be blue. If you're calling into a meeting and like to testify, please dial star nine to raise your hand. When I call for public testimony, a member of the staff will announce your name and allow you to speak. You must unmute your microphone. Your webcam will not be active. Please give your full name, any group affiliation, and announce whether you support or oppose the petition. Each speaker will be allowed up to two minutes. If necessary, I'll advise you when you have thirty seconds remaining, at that time, please summarize your remarks so the meeting can continue and others may be heard. Finally, the proponents are allowed a brief five to ten minute period for rebuttal if they so desire. Please begin the presentation.
Thank you and good morning, Chairman, members of the board. My name is Camille Platt. I am a project manager with the BPDA on the Mary Ellen McCormick redevelopment project in South Boston. This project consists of the phase redevelopment of the northernmost eighteen acres of the thirty-one acre McCormick development into a mixed-use, mixed-income community. The remaining approximately thirteen acres of the McCormick development will be redeveloped under a separate planned development area development plan as part of a future second phase. The project will comprise eight new buildings, the substantial renovation of an existing structure, and will also include up to one million four hundred and forty thousand square feet of closed-floor area of residential, retail, community, and open space uses. Approximately thirteen percent of the project site, which is about two point four eight acres, will include publicly accessible open spaces, which will be provided in a variety of configurations, including both active and passive areas. The project notification form was filed with the BPDA on October twenty ninth of twenty twenty one. Since then, two impact advisory group meetings were held as well as one public meeting. These virtual meetings were well attended and duly advertised in the local newspapers, as well as circulated to our South Boston community email list. The project was then approved by our BPDA board on December fourteenth of twenty twenty three. I will now hand it over to my colleagues in planning and the development team to begin the presentation. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Camille.
Thank you, Camille. My name is Ted Schwartzberg. I'm with the BPDA's planning department. Next slide, please. I'm here to give two slides on the planning and zoning context that informed the BPDA staff review of this proposal. For the zoning, the underlying zoning is H1, but PDA one forty-seven will supersede that use in dimensional guidelines pending today's review. Also, this site lies within the coastal flood resilience overlay district. In terms of planning context that staff used, this is adjacent to the Mocley Park, and Mocley Park vision plan was part of the review process as well as the citywide housing Boston plan. We also consider complete streets and bike parking guidelines. Next slide, please. For Phase One, the zoning will be determined by the BPD, by the PDA that will be discussed by the proponent in subsequent slides. But in terms of the sea fraud overlay, this does comply with flood resilience, flood resiliency design requirements. This is consistent with the vision plan for Mocley Park, and of course, with the city's housing, citywide plan. The design meets complete streets guidelines and then also is compliant with the city's bike parking guidelines, and that's all from the planning department. Thank you.
Excellent.
Good morning. My name is Drew Colbert. Work for Wind Development and have been partners with the Boston Housing Authority and the Mary Ellen McCormick Tenant Task Force since two thousand and seventeen in planning the extensive redevelopment effort here. Next slide. The existing site consists of approximately eighteen acres on the northernmost portion of the Mary Ellen McCormick Public Housing Community located in South Boston between the Andrews Square and UMass JFK Redline stops. The project area is bounded by Divine Way to the north, O'Connor Way to the west, Old Colony and Mocley Park to the east, and the future Phase Two development to the south. The existing community in its entirety consists of a thousand and sixteen deeply affordable public housing units that were constructed between nineteen thirty-six and nineteen thirty-eight. Next slide. Our Phase One project will redevelop the northernmost portion, as you can see here. The site mainly consists of two, three, and four-story walk-up brick apartment buildings. Next slide. While the site has great access to mass transit and community amenities such as Mocley Park and Carson Beach, it often faces infrastructure as a significant barrier, such as Old Colony Ave, as well as a street grid that doesn't align to the surrounding neighborhood. Not only isolating this community economically due to its one hundred percent affordability, but also geographically. Next slide. Here's additional context of the existing community as it exists today. The streets that bisect the site are secure tists and again do not connect to existing city streets both north and west of this community, leading to that isolation. The streets are also too narrow for many public safety vehicles and school buses to bisect the community. And as Ted mentioned, our project is going to be redeveloping that street grid in meeting Boston Complete Street standards. Next slide. Throughout the course of the development, we will seek to maximize some of the great existing assets of the community, one of which is its mature tree canopy with the street trees that were planted in the nineteen thirties, you know, now upwards of eighty-plus years in age. Our streets, open spaces, and buildings were designed to maximize the preservation of this tree canopy. Next slide. So the proposed PDA again consists of the northernmost eighteen acres on site. The development will create eight residential buildings as well as one community center, which is the historic adopter reuse of an existing and abandoned cold-fired steam plant. The total GFA for this PDA is one million four hundred and forty thousand square feet, of which one million three hundred and eighty-one thousand will be dedicated towards mixed-income residential uses, creating one thousand three hundred and ten residential units, of which five hundred and twenty-nine will be BHA deeply affordable replacement units. The project will also be creating ancillary neighborhood scale retail on the ground floors of approximately thirty-three thousand square feet, and then that community center of approximately twenty-six thousand square feet. There are three distinct public open spaces located throughout the Phase One project, notably the Veterans Park at the corner of Logan and Mohawk Street, the Community Green adjacent to the community center, and Town Square at the entrance to the community across from Mocley Park. These open spaces will total approximately two point five acres. In addition, there'll be further streetscape improvements of three point seven acres. In all of the residential buildings, at minimum, twenty percent of the units will be BHA replacement affordable units. Next slide. Those open spaces that you can see here vary in size and location. Some are ground floor resident amenity courtyards, others are elevated courtyards on roof decks. The distinct open spaces you can see here include the Veterans Memorial, the Town Square and the Community Green with a variety of passive and active recreation opportunities for residents of this community and the public. In addition, we're creating pocket parks in areas for residents in the community to gather, as well as a public dog park. Next slide. Working with the residents, we sought to increase the variety of uses and activate the ground floors in this new development to enhance safety and security of the residents that live in this community as well as the surrounding neighborhoods. We sought to do this by having vibrant and active ground floors with neighborhood scale retail, as I described in red, community uses in orange, ground floor residential amenities in lighter orange, and then direct entry in ground floor residential units in yellow. Next slide. The community center, as I described, is going to be the repurposed former coal-fired steam plant that used to heat this thirty-acre site. It will be transformed into the Billy McGonigal Community Center named after the late BHA administrator and resident, former resident of Mary Ellen McCormick. This center will provide tools and resources for residents from one of the city's poorest communities, as well as their neighbors, to develop the necessary skills to enter or grow in the workforce, contribute to the economy, and build wealth. Wind Development, working with nonprofit partners from South Boston and across the city, will be hosting hundreds of hours of programming focused on workforce training, job placement, continuing education, as well as programs for children, seniors, and more. In the foreground of the community center, you can see the Community Green, which is one of our vibrant public open spaces. Next slide. The PDA area from the three D-massing is shown here with those eight residential buildings and the community center as well as the I'm getting a little background. The buildings are a variety of typology, height, and size to reflect not only the surrounding neighborhood context of Andrews Square in South Boston, but also provide the necessary density and scale needed to rebuild all affordable public housing units in a mixed-income nature. Next slide. The first three buildings, all of which have received BCDC approval to be constructed, will begin with Building A located in the upper right-hand corner of the site closest to Andrews Square. Building A consists of ninety-four all affordable BHA replacement units. It will serve as a relocation resource, maximizing the number of one-way moves for existing residents from their current unit into a new deeply affordable unit. This will limit the number of households that need to be temporarily relocated off-site while their new unit is constructed. Building A, again, consists of ninety-four units and is a six-story building. Next slide. Following the completion of Building A, we'll begin construction on Buildings B one, B two, as well as C one and C two. B one and B two, front Old Colony Ave closest to Preble Circle and across the street from Mocley Park. These two buildings consist of three hundred units, twenty percent will be affordable BHA replacement units as well as ground floor retail. Next slide. Built at the same time as B one, B two are the C one and C two buildings. C one will again serve as a critical relocation resource, creating a hundred and seventy-two units of one hundred percent affordable BHA replacement units, all of which will be available to households sixty-two and older. Over forty percent of the existing community is over the age of sixty-two, and that population needs critical onsite services dedicated to seniors, which we'll be providing in this specific building, again, maximizing the ability for those existing residents to move from their current unit into a new unit with critical onsite services. Adjacent to the C one building is C two, which is a row house, townhouse-type building, very similar to the triple typology found throughout South Boston and many Boston neighborhoods. This building consists of twenty mixed-income units, of which twenty percent are affordable BHA replacement. Next slide. And that concludes my presentation this morning. Thank you for the opportunity to present on this critical PDA, allowing us to create a vibrant mixed-income neighborhood while replacing critically needed affordable housing units on an existing public housing community. Thank you.
Thank you, Drew. Can we take the presentation down now? Any questions, comments from the commission? Nobody? Any public testimony?
If anybody would like to testify, please indicate by raising your hand, please. Right, we have at least one. John, go ahead and unmute yourself. I'm not gonna try to pronounce your last name.
Good morning. My name is John Pikatowski, lifelong resident of South Boston, board member of the Andrews Square Civic Association. I live not more than five hundred feet from this development, and thinking back, when the RFPs went out in twenty seventeen, being knowledgeable in the development and construction and whatnot, I was concerned who would get the rights to develop, redevelop this property. The wind companies have far exceeded what I had ever hoped for. They've been more than the developer in the neighborhood. They've been a partner in the neighborhood. As you've seen in the slides, the Billy McGonigal Community Center, I was at that event, the dedication event. I videoed it for Bobby I do, South Boston Beat. I met with Gilbert Win at the event. It was a great time, but would say in that, they're just an awesome partner in the community. They've met with the civic associations in the area. They've worked hand in hands with Mary Ellen McCormick Task Force as well as Andrews Square Civic. I always come across in development meetings looking at infrastructure, whether it be roadways, electrical utilities, et cetera. They've addressed all my concerns as well as others that were raised in various meetings that they've met with several different times with ASCA, I know, and as I said, they've lived with Cal Sullivan, Mary Ellen McCormick Task Force. This is
Second, John.
Terrific. This is a project, a good project that ticks all the boxes in a positive way. Thank you again, zoning board commission and the wind companies.
Thank you, John.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Jeff. Just at this point, we'll close out this portion of the hearing. I'll enter our business section. Questions, comments, motions?
I would just comment, Mr. Chair, that I thought the presentation was very, very good. But the sequencing of this is clearly a result of a lot of discussion and thought, and the ability to accomplish a very complicated redevelopment here in this first component phase. I think the PDA is a great tool to provide and facilitate that. And unless there's other comments, I would make a motion that we approve map amendment application number seven, seventy, development plan for Plan Development Area number one forty-seven, Mary Ellen McCormick Phase One redevelopment map for South Boston.
Second.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion on the motion? Haven none? We'll roll a roll call. Jill Hatton?
Yes.
Michael Nichols?
Yes.
Michael Demela?
Yes.
Nelson Arroyo?
Yes.
David Ma?
Yes.
Ayesha Miller?
She's still not on, Jay.
Not on, I'm sorry. Okay. Ricardo Ostrich?
Yes.
And I vote yes. That's seven, zero. Congratulations. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
We go to our nine fifteen hearing now. This is a hearing before the Boston zoning commission to consider a petition for the approval of map amendment application number seven, sixty-nine, and a and a petition for approval of the master plan for Plan Development Area number one, four, six, Columbia Point Crossing. The hearing was duly advertised on December twenty first, twenty twenty-three, in the Boston Herald. In the Boston zoning commission hearing on petitions, the proponent will first present their case and subject to questioning by members of the commission only. We are taking support in opposition at the same time. If you're planning to testify, please take the time to verify your computer microphone is active. Click the hand icon on your zoom control panel. This will signal staff they would like to speak. When your hand is raised, your hand icon will be blue. If you're calling into the meeting and like to testify, please dial star nine to raise your hand. When I call for public testimony, a member of the staff will announce your name and allow you to speak. You must unmute your microphone. Your webcam will not be active. Please give your full name, any group affiliation, and announce whether you support or oppose the petition. Each speaker will be allowed up to two minutes. If necessary, I'll advise you when you have thirty seconds remaining. At that time, please summarize your remarks so the meeting can continue and others may be heard. Finally, the proponents are allowed a brief five to ten minute period for rebuttal if they so desire. Please begin the presentation.
Good morning and thank you, Commissioner Hurley and members of the zoning commission. I'm here before you to present, oops, excuse me, that I'm here before you to present the master plan for Plan Development Area number one forty-six, thirty-five to seventy-five Morrissey Boulevard, also known as Columbia Point Crossing. Located in Dorchester on Morrissey Boulevard, the project encompasses approximately nine acres of land that is currently occupied by a variety of commercial buildings, including a supermarket and The Record Company. The proposal contemplates the development of seven new buildings, open space, and road networks. Three of the proposed buildings are proposed as residential buildings with a commitment to twenty percent IDP. The project will contain an estimated one hundred and seventeen affordable units and five hundred and eighty-five units total. The remaining four buildings are currently envisioned as commercial life science buildings. The project will provide an activated ground floor with retail and community uses throughout. Importantly, the grocery store currently at the location will have a new space in the future development as well. The project will also create a new road network on the site and several new open spaces, including a large family park, which will be protected in perpetuity. In addition to the work being done at the site, the project will bring a number of important contributions to the neighborhood, including a contribution of up to four million six hundred thousand dollars to the Transportation Mitigation Bank established by the recently approved Dorchester Bay City for improvements to area transportation infrastructure, including Morrissey Boulevard, Kuskuska Circle, and JFK UMass Station. The project will also make a donation of a dollar per square foot of residential usage for the upkeep and maintenance of Mocley Park. Seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars will also be provided to the Dorchester Bay Economic Development Corporation for community development, and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars will be provided to the city to assist independent, small local businesses in the Dorchester area with technical assistance, storefront improvements, neighborhood commercial street beautification, and affordable commercial space, including but not limited to the Dorchester Avenue Commercial Corridor in the Columbia-Savon Hill neighborhood of Dorchester. The project will also provide approximately seven thousand four hundred and fifty square feet of ground floor community space that programmed in collaboration with the city throughout the Article ADP process. I'll now have Ted Schwartzberg take you through the planning context before the development team leads you through the presentation.
Thanks, Nick. Deb?
Thank you, Nick. Thank you, Chair. Next slide, please. So I'll run through three slides to talk about the zoning and planning context that guided BPDA staff review of this proposal. This site is located in the Dorchester Neighborhood District, which is governed by the Community Commercial Subdistrict in Article sixty-five. It's located in the Coastal Flood Resilience Overlay, the Green Belt Overlay, as well as the Restricted Parking District. And then the neighborhood plan for this area is the two thousand and one Columbia Point Master Plan. Next slide, please. I'm pleased to report that the zoning is something that I previously worked on. Two years ago, I presented to this body the amendment that created this Columbia-Morrissey Community Commercial Subdistrict because, as I had mentioned at the time, this is a location where PDAs are a great zoning tool for this site and Dorchester Bay City across the street. Accordingly, Section sixty-five, twenty-eight of the code indicates that community commercial subdistricts such as this one are the only places where PDAs are allowed.
are the only places where PDAs are allowed in Dorchester. And that was the zoning tool that we used from the start in our review of this project. In addition to the PDA tool that we used as we were evaluating it, this is compliant with inclusionary development requirements that were in place at the time that we were reviewing it as well as compliant with BTD parking maximums. Next slide, please. And then in terms of the underlying plan, while, as was the case with Bay City across the street, the proposed heights and dimensions are not consistent with the two thousand eleven plan. But two thousand eleven plan heights and dimensions were never encoded in zoning, so staff took the most relevant parts of that plan to be the armature of open spaces and streets that the plan creates. And as the proponents will describe in their subsequent slides, the key elements that were taken from this plan were a north-south main street that connects this part of the neighborhood ultimately up to the JFK UMass T Station and two passive open spaces. And with that, I will complete the planning slides. Thank you.
Excellent.
Next slide, please. This is Lewis Kraft with Stantec Architecture. I'm going to assume that everybody can hear me. I'm joined by Jen Schultz, Selden Law Drive Safe Jen, and ownership represented by Matt Snyder and Dave Rafferty. As mentioned, this master plan site is located just west of Morrissey Boulevard between Hub twenty-five and South Line. It's currently an underutilized site with light commercial save for the grocery store component, which as mentioned, will remain on site. Next slide, please. Critically, this master plan lies at a juncture adjacent to, or very close to JFK UMass and surrounded by existing neighborhoods and newly approved developments, Dorchester Bay City, Hub twenty-five and South Line. And it's going to form sort of the nexus of this new neighborhood character. Next slide, please. As mentioned by Ted and others, really, the planning context for this started in two thousand and eleven, the two thousand and eleven Columbia Point Master Plan, and it was a testament to the sound planning by the city and the community that that vision that was laid out really made a lot of sense to bring to the fore today. And the project team has been able to deliver on those key points, mainly being a connection, facilitating a future connection to JFK UMass T through a north-south mixed-use development, also creating critical connection across Morrissey Boulevard and then expanding on some of the open space and mobility components. Next slide. And those connections that you see here are really laid out in this slide with a main spine leading from JFK UMass through Hub twenty-five and across to the South Line Courtyard, but then also connecting the neighborhoods Dorchester, Seven Hill, along Morrissey Boulevard and across Morrissey through Bay City to the waterfront and to those open space connections. But then within the site, there's a critical one point three five acres of open space, which we'll show you shortly. Next slide. So here's the master plan as it's envisioned, one point five seven million total GFA space. This is a mixed-use pedestrian-focused project with seven buildings centered around that Main Street spine. But then really what's important is codified is this dedicated for open spaces, which you'll see here, that will be delivered in every phase of the project dedicated in perpetuity and forming the backbone of this new community. Next slide. This is a view here of that Main Street. The Main Street will be resiliency raised. We know that resiliency is a major component of this neighborhood. And so raising that Main Street allows for open, mixed-use connections and the ability for a grocery store to be built as part of the development while the existing star market is in place onsite so that there's continual grocery service to the neighborhood, which is a critical component of the over seventy thousand square feet of retail that's being delivered as part of this master plan. Next slide. Also of importance, the project holds the buildings back from the property line along Morrissey Boulevard to allow for an activation and engagement of Morrissey Boulevard, both in its current state, but then being able to connect to the future vision for Morrissey Boulevard with active use entries, a planted buffer zone and the provisions for, you know, allowing for multimodal bike usage and a new parkway experience along Morrissey Boulevard. Next slide. Here you see an aerial from the southeast, looking down onto a collection of buildings. It's worth mentioning that this is an Article ADC PDA master plan. Each one of these buildings and open spaces will come back to the city, to the public and those input channels as part of Article ADB master plan. So all these buildings, their articulation will be further developed. But you can see the centering of these buildings around those open spaces activating and enlivening this new neighborhood a character, building C, will be even the new grocery store and the phasing will roughly come online left to right, starting with the two buildings on your left and that A Street connection across Morrissey Boulevard and connecting to the Dorchester Bay City within the Main Street, continuing through the site, straight line towards JFK UMass T Station. Next slide. As part of the PDA master plan, we developed a extensive series of design guidelines in concert with the city, with the community and IAG input. This is just one section of those that will govern open space character, height, step backs along Morrissey Boulevard and Main Street to really help define the pedestrian character and the utility and comfort of those open spaces. Next slide, please. This is a ground floor use plan that's conceptual nature. It's worth noting as part of this that this is residential and life science uses. Five hundred and eighty-five residences are envisioned as part of this master plan with twenty percent affordable. That's a critical component, along with, if you see it, Building B, seventy-five hundred square feet of community open space connecting to, or sorry, a community indoor space that's connected to that community park. It's also worth noting that all of the parking is below grade and service access is moved to the periphery of the site so that we have a mixed-use pedestrian-focused Main Street spine. Next slide. This slide just really speaks to the thought and care that's gone into creating individual use and character for each of these four open spaces and that Main Street spines. So starting on the left, a community park that's focused on gathering, connecting to that community space and the South Line Courtyard, a civic plaza that would be at the nexus of A Street, Morrissey Boulevard and that connection across Morrissey Boulevard, a family park that will have active uses, including play spaces, dog run and located next to the project's residential use and then also Hub twenty-five. And then finally, a pocket park that will allow for a quiet, nature-focused respite as part of this new development. Next slide. We're going to show you just quickly some conceptual slides. All of these open spaces that were shown here are going to be further developed, obviously, when these come back for Article ADB to the city with input from the community, IAG, and also the city as well. This community space will have that spilt space connected to the community use, the potential for a structure that can serve as the backdrop for gathering and also a connection through the site to the existing South Line North Courtyard, creating a continuity of spaces. Next slide. The family park, which is to the north of the site, closest to JFK UMass. This is our largest space. It's kind of a feature space. You can see here that this space will also sort of mitigate the resiliency raised center spine of the site and provide a variety of uses, open spaces, access to light air and community benefits. Next slide. Here's that civic plaza space, which provides both open, green and more formal gathering spaces that will be connected to and visually linked to the grocery store main entrance, which you see towards the background of this site and other retail and active uses surrounding. Next slide. And this brings you just in a little bit closer. We're really excited with the level of input that we've gotten from both the city and the community here and that this project can bring both well-needed housing and jobs to this area, forming the backbone of a of a new community and connecting to existing communities. But with that, we offer our thanks from the project team.
Thank you, Louis. If somebody could take the presentation down. Any questions or comments from the commission? Quiet group today. Any public testimony, Jeff?
I guess, Jay, just my only comment is, just like the Dorchester Bay project, I sincerely hope that the MBTA catches up with these visionary plans so that they can provide adequate and twenty-first century transportation, which I think is currently lacking. So I'm supportive. But I really hope that the MBTA gets their shit together. And that's French.
Yep.
All right. Sorry about laughing.
Any public testimony?
Like to testify on this hearing, please signify by raising your hand, please. Quiet in the public sector, too. Nothing.
Okay. At this point, we'll close out this portion of the hearing and enter our business session. Questions, comments, motions?
I guess I would just comment, Jay, that each of the component parts of this, as the proponent has said, will come back through process. I actually think that their preliminary PDA plan is quite developed, so I hope that that gives, I know, some runway to this to move. I think in the presentation, it said twenty-five, twenty-six was their kind of first phase to start. But in any event, I thought the material was very good and this concept is very well-developed. So I, you know, I know we will see these phases as they come through and I hope that they come through sooner rather than later.
I'll make a motion. I can make a motion to approve map amendment application number seven sixty-nine, master plan for planned development area number one four six Columbia Point Crossing, map five A, five B, Dorchester Neighborhood District.
Motion is second. Any discussion on the motion? Harry None will do a roll call. Jill Hatton?
Yes.
Michael Nichols?
Yes.
Michael DeMella?
Yes.
Nelson Arroyo?
Yes.
David Ma?
Yes.
Ayesha Miller?
Yes.
Ricardo Ostrich?
Yes.
And I vote yes. That's eight, nothing. Congratulations. Good luck.
Very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Here, everybody. Nine thirty, public hearing. This is a hearing before the Boston Zoning Commission to consider a petition for the approval of map amendment application number seven seven one and a petition for the approval of the planned development area number one forty-five, four fifteen Newbury Street Back Bay. The hearing was duly advertised on December twenty-first, twenty twenty-three in the Boston Herald. The Boston Zoning Commission hearing on petitions, the proponent will first present their case and is subject to questioning by members of the commission only. We are taking support in opposition at the same time. If you are planning to testify, please take the time to verify your computer microphone is active. Click the hand icon on your zoom control panel. This will signal staff that you would like to speak. When your hand is raised, your hand icon will be blue. If you are calling into the meeting and like to testify, please dial star nine to raise your hand. When I call for public testimony, a member of the commission, a member of the staff will announce your name and allow you to speak. You must unmute your microphone. Your webcam will not be active. Please give your full name, any group affiliation, announce whether you support or oppose the petition. Each speaker will be allowed up to two minutes. If necessary, I'll advise you when you have thirty seconds remaining. At that time, please summarize your remarks from the meeting and continue when others may be heard. Finally, the proponents are allowed a brief five to ten minute period for rebuttal if they so desire. Please begin the presentation.
Thank you and good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission.
Morning.
My name is Sarah Pack. I'm a senior project manager in the Development Review Department. And we're here before you this morning to discuss the proposed development plan for planned development area number one forty-five, four fifteen Newbury Street and the associated four fifteen Newbury Street project. The four fifteen Newbury Street PDA development plan is located on a one point one acre site at three seventy-four Commonwealth Avenue, containing the existing Harvard Club of Boston building, four fifteen Newbury Street and a portion of three eighty Commonwealth Avenue in the Back Bay neighborhood of Boston. The development plan envisions the construction of two new buildings containing approximately one hundred and thirty-three residential units, residential amenities and new Harvard Club facilities within approximately one hundred and fifty-seven thousand square feet of new building space, together with up to one hundred and twenty-five off-street managed vehicle parking spaces exclusively for the Harvard Club and events. Of the one hundred and thirty-three residential units, approximately thirty-eight will be homeownership units located in the three-story building and ninety-five units will be residential rental units located in the eleven-story building. Twenty-three units or approximately seventeen percent of the total number of units of the proposed project will be created as IDP homeownership units within the three-story building. The development team filed their project notification form on January nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, followed by a supplemental information filing on February seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. The development team then filed a draft planned development area development plan on August sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. The BPA hosted four public meetings and four IAG meetings between March twenty twenty-two and October twenty twenty-three to review the project and the PDA development plan. These meetings were advertised in the local neighborhood newspapers, posted in the BPD's calendar and an email notification was sent to all subscribers of the BPD's Back Bay Neighborhood Updates. Proposed project received approval from the Boston Civic Design Commission on October third, twenty twenty-three, and the BPD Board granted their approval on December fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. At this point, I would like to hand it off to my colleague Ted, once again, from the planning department to present the planning context for the project, followed by a presentation from the development team. Thank you all.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, Sarah. Sarah, Mr. Chairman, this is the proposal that I worked on as planner since its inception with us, the BPD in twenty nineteen. I'll give you two slides on the planning and zoning context that informed our review. This site sits in two different zoning districts in the base code, so the right side on this map along Mass Ave is in a B eight one twenty, so business maximum FAR eight, maximum height one hundred and twenty feet. And then the left or westerly portion is in H three sixty-five, housing district max FAR three, max height sixty-five feet. There are no recent local planning initiatives for this site. In subsequent slides by the proponents, you'll see images and renderings showing an adjacent project on the other side of Newbury Street that is a Turnpike Air Rights parcel, but that Turnpike Air Rights parcel across the street is a much different planning context, one that's predicated on extra height in exchange for the provision of public realm over the highway right-of-way, which is not the case here. This project is all built on terraformer. In terms of the neighborhood context, it's very close to MBTA subway and bus service. The current use of most of the site is surface parking. And the reason why one site lives in two different zoning districts is that this is where the Back Bay Street Network, which was filled in first, meets the Fenway Street Network, which was filled in subsequently and hits that two grid, those grids at an angle. And so the zoning boundary follows the alignment of Mass Ave, as you can see on this map, and collides at an angle with the partialization, which is following the Newbury Street network. Next and final slide from planning, please. In terms of what these two zoning districts mean for their dimensions, on the easterly portion along Mass Ave, they have maxed out their height, so they are proposed at one hundred and twenty feet, which is exactly what the underlying zoning allows. It's a little bit harder to calculate the FAR because the zoning for this part of the site allows up to eight, but taking the average for their whole site, they're at four point six. And then I want to also point out that they have not maximized the zoning envelope on the westerly portion where housing is allowed. So maximum height allowed by the underlying zoning is sixty-five feet. And the proposal you'll see on subsequent slides is for thirty-six feet or three stories. In any case, we in the planning department are thrilled to see land that's currently used as surface parking for additional housing, and this is very consistent with the housing plan, housing and changing city as well as the citywide transportation plan, Go Boston twenty thirty. And in addition, this is compliant with the Transportation Department's parking maximums. And with that, I've completed. parking maximums. And with that, I've completed the zoning and planning section. Thank you.
Excellent.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. My name is Abby Goldenbarb, and I am a Vice President of Development at Trinity Financial. Trinity commenced the community process in 2019 after being designated by the Harvard Club of Boston. The program and design that we submitted to the Harvard Club was for replacement amenity space and parking for the Harvard Club and the addition of a 200-room hotel. The proposed massing and design is a single six to eight-story building across the site. In the fall of 2019, we engaged the Back Bay community in a series of meetings and learned that a hotel was a use that would not be acceptable to the community. We heard vehement concerns from abutters who own homes overlooking the site and own nearby commercial properties. We then began a series of meetings to reimagine the plan. We held over 40 meetings with individuals and groups onsite and in people's homes before even filing our letter of intent with the BPDA in 2021. We drastically changed the building's program enassing in response to the neighbors with whom we met. The plans that Dan Jeller Mini from CBT will show you are the results of four years of listening to that feedback and responding to it in a way that we are confident will benefit the public with 133 new homes, including 23 affordable for-sale condominiums in a neighborhood that currently only has six inclusionary development condominiums. This development will elevate the public realm of Newbury Street Extension to the stature of the balance of Newbury Street and create a more inclusive and diverse neighborhood of Boston. I'll now turn it over to my colleague at CBT.
Thanks, Abby.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Dan from CBT. I'll be continuing the presentation. You can go to the next slide. Starting with our site location, we're located at 415 Newbury Street. To the left is Charles Gate East. To the right is Mass Ave, and to the north is Com Ave. Our buildings are indicated by those yellow blocks in the center of the site, in the center of the slide. Next slide. Here's some site context views. So our site currently is a open-air surface parking lot. It does contain a driveway that is used by the buildings on Com Ave to provide access to the rear of the buildings. And there's also a large windowless masonry volume that houses squash courts for the Harvard Club that's slated for demolition. Next slide. So this is our first floor plan overlaid on the site, starting with the blue block in the top right. That's the Harvard Club, which is existing to remain. And just south of that is where we're proposing the 11-story mixed-use building that makes use is comprised of Harvard Club facilities as well as residential rental units. Moving to the left of the slide is that existing driveway that's protected via an easement. And to the left of that driveway is a three-story condominium building. Next slide. This is a view of the proposed buildings, elevation within its context, showing site improvements, as well as the new proposed street trees along our site. Next slide. And this is a site longitudinal section showing the programmatic organization of the building. So the 11-story building on the right, Harvard Club occupies the basement, first floor, second and third floor. The rest of the building is residential rentals, and then to the left is our three-story condominium building, which is 100% residential over a below-grade parking garage. Next slide. This is a site cross-section of our 11-story building, showing the relationship to the existing Harvard Club, as well as parcel 12, which is shown on the right. The parcel 12 isn't exactly across from our 11-story building, but does cover part of our site, which we'll see in our next slide. This is an aerial view of the site with parcel 12 in the foreground. It shows the cascading effect as we transition to the historic district of Back Bay in the background. Next slide. I'm getting a little closer to our 11-story building. We're proposing a glassy inviting base, which provides access to residential and Harvard Club facilities on Newbury Street, which will activate the sidewalk. As we move up the building, we're proposing a brick facade with cast stone accents, and finally, the light and airy crown at the top of the building. Next slide. This is a view of our three-story building. We've activated the streetscape by providing a vibrant corner entrance, which serves the second and third floor units, as well as six at-grade units, which are directly accessible from the sidewalk. We have an AB rhythm to the facade, which is a nod to the scale and architecture east of Mass Ave on Newbury Street. And then one last thing I'll mention, we've also recessed 90% of the facades in the three-story and 11-story building to provide an additional width to the public realm, as well as incorporating planters with landscape elements. Next slide. And then some views from the historic district. So starting at the top left, this is a view west of the Harvard Club site, looking towards our site. As you can see, the top of our building is visible over the 382 Com Ave building. Moving to the top right, that's a view from across Com Ave, looking directly at the Harvard Club. The crown of the 11-story building is visible over the existing Harvard Club. Moving to the bottom left, that's a view east of Mass Ave on Com Ave, looking towards the site. The Elliott Hotel does conceal the view of our 11-story building from this perspective. And then finally, going full circle, bottom right is us standing at Newbury Street in Mass Ave, looking west. You can see parcel 12 on the left, as well as our building's crown over the existing room and board building. And with that, I'll turn it over to David Lindhart to talk a little bit about PDA. Next slide.
Morning, Commissioners. David Lindhart Coulson in stores with the project team. And we want to spend just a little bit of time on the rationale behind using a PDA, zone relief mechanism here. The site is PDA eligible and meets the one-acre threshold. So so beyond that, I, thanks to Ted, actually, for setting up earlier some of the zoning complexity, and that's you know, the PDA helps to resolve some of that. The site is bifurcated diagonally. You know, business zoning on one side, residential on the other side. That zoning transition actually cuts right through the existing Harvard Club building floor plate through the proposed 11-story building floor plate. So you know, being able to really treat the whole site as one zoning lot with one zoning overlay, that's helpful. We also, given that the site involves an existing building, that'll stay, the Harvard Club, and then two new buildings that all together operate as a campus. Again, the PDA helps to resolve that complexity. And something that we emphasized during the public process, and worth mentioning again, there was a lot of attention to the program itself, getting the right program, getting the right design, and then you know, wrap around zoning relief that makes sense to deliver that. Also, as Ted mentioned earlier, we were not trying to max out height density on the site. Based on the underlying FAR, there is actually, you know, sort of leaving gross floor area on the table that would be available, just based on the underlying zoning. The heights not going above 120 for the 11-story building, coming in below the 65-foot height limit that otherwise would apply where the three-story building is. So again, the approach was get the right project, get the right design, and then wrap the zoning leave around that, but don't try to maximize bulk on the site. And we also paid attention to public benefits, and Abby can talk more about that.
Thanks, David.
Stay next slide, please. So as I mentioned earlier, we have 133 units of housing, including onsite mixed-income homeownership housing. This includes 23 onsite affordable units, again, in a neighborhood which today only has six inclusionary homeownership units. We are talking with the city and have an affirmative furthering fair housing plan to make the demonstration a development initiative designed to address the racial wealth gap in Boston. We're going to be talking to mass housing in the city about ways we can confront that. We do have a number of public realm improvements, including pedestrian lighting, landscaping, and street trees. Also, work for off-site improvements will be done to really green Newbury Street in the way it needs, it needs. We have made a number of multimodal transportation improvements, $75,000 towards a Blue Bike Station in creating traffic calming speed home on Newbury Street, and three spaces in front of the building for on-street loading for other properties on Newbury Street as well. So we are excited to be here at this point in time, after many years of hard work, and thank you for your time and review.
Thank you, Abby. Someone take the presentation down? Oh, thank you. Questions, comments on the commission? Wow. Any public testimony, Jeff?
Uh, yes, there are a few hands raised, Mr. Chairman, so we'll call them in order. Justin? Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, everyone. Thanks for having me here today. I represent Kensington Investment Company. We are an abutter. We are opposed, although we are trying to work on a resolution with Trinity at this time to move forward. We are opposed because we don't think this is appropriate for PDA. If you listen to the first two presentations today, the first one has the Billy McGonigal Community Center and $15 million for new open improvements. The second one was situated on nine acres with 1.35 acres dedicated to park space. We didn't hear that today for the presentation we heard just now for the Harvard Club. Affordable housing is not a public benefit. It's a requirement to build. You know, in this affordable housing, all the affordable housing is in one three-story building. And again, that's not a benefit. That's a requirement to building here. We're just not hearing that a PDA is appropriate. Again, a PDA is a zoning district that establishes special zoning controls for large or complex projects. That's from the BPDA website. A PDA, you know, the BRA policy since 2014 is that a PDA must be a complex project, provide for numerous uses appropriate for the immediate area and neighborhood. We don't think this is complex, does not provide for numerous uses. It is inappropriate for a PDA. They're not intended, nor should they be used as a mechanism to avoid the zoning board of appeal. As a city councillor, even Mayor Wu released a report critical of the use of PDA, saying developers can flout the underlying zoning code through a process and promote speculation by developers who aim to leverage influence. Furthermore, on July 12, 2022, the BPDA communicated that this project specifically was inappropriate for a PDA. And the proponent had not clearly articulated how the project furthers neighborhood planning goals. Again, we don't think that this offers the public benefits and for the immediate area and surrounding neighborhood, and that's what a PDA should do. Thank you.
Thanks, Justin.
Okay, next, Chris Tracy. Go ahead, Chris.
Thanks. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, go ahead, Chris.
Good morning, Chairman Hurley and members of the commission. Thank you all for your service to the city of Boston. My name is Chris Tracy. I'm a Vice President at O'Neil and Associates with a business address of 18 Tremont Street in Boston. My clients are the Elliott Hotel and Kensington Investment Company, two longstanding stakeholders and institutions of the special little historic corner in the city of Boston. I'd like to echo Justin's comments in that they are working with Trinity and trying to reach a resolution, but at this time, they are not there. So I also rise in opposition to this PDA. A PDA has never been granted in this historic district of the Back Bay. We believe this is a wildly inappropriate use of such a powerful zoning tool that this board can wield. You heard two sites earlier tonight, early this morning, that we thought were completely appropriate uses. The McCormick Housing Project in South Boston. Over 1,000 residents of the city of Boston live in those buildings. It's imperative that they get remade. That's a very important and critical project that needed a PDA. We completely agree with that. Also, the Billy McGonigal Community Center will provide robust community benefits. That couldn't be a more better model for what a PDA is. Also, the site on Morrissey Boulevard, again, a massive, complex site that warrants and requires such a powerful zoning tool. We believe this is quite the opposite. We're talking about 133 units of housing in the revamp of a private social club. Looking closer to the Back Bay, just a few blocks away, you have the Prudential Center. The Prude is, again, a completely appropriate use. Such a massive site. This is simply not that. A key tenet of PDAs is robust community benefits. We believe they don't have it here. IDP is a requirement, not a community benefit. We believe this flies in the face of the new community planning that our mayor and Director Jameson strive for the city of Boston. We respectfully ask the commission to either deny or table this matter. We think this should go to the zoning board of appeals. We think that's more appropriate. We are opposed to the PDA. Thank you all for your time.
Thanks, Chris.
Okay, next, Sean Regan. Sean, go ahead.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Sean Regan. I am an attorney representing the Windsor Place Condominium Trust, which consists of 92 residential units and 14 commercial units, and is a direct abutter to the rear of the three-story structure located at 390 Commonwealth Ave. Throughout this process, the proponent has engaged in significant constructive discussions with residents, and as a result, has made significant project changes to address residents' concerns and preserve our building's unique features. We believe the two buildings with varying heights provide a unique look, which is quintessentially Boston and protects current residents. Given the complex zoning of the site and the appropriateness of the project for the site, we wholeheartedly support the use of a PDA, which will provide additional protection and stability for future residents. Most importantly, Trinity has spent significant time, energy, and resources to understand and address residents' concerns. This result represents what can occur through proper neighborhood outreach and should be an example for developers and the city. For these reasons, Windsor Place Condominium Trust, on behalf of its 92 direct residential abutters and 14 commercial units, offer our support for the project and encourage the commission to approve the PDA to lock in and codify this zoning in the interest of residents. Thank you.
Thanks, Sean.
Okay, next is Jackie Essien. Jackie, go ahead.
Hello. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm speaking as the Chair of the Neighborhood Association of the Back Bay Development Committee. We review large-scale projects along with our neighbors in the Back Bay, and we do outreach to encourage people in the community to participate in major, anything, really. I just would like to say the residential and commercial members of our community have worked very hard with the BPDA, BRA, to develop zoning that has worked to make this a thriving, interesting, and successful laborhood for residents, businesses, and events. One of the most important economic engines in the city of Boston and a destination for visitors from around the nation and the world. There's never been a PDA requested or approved in the Back Bay Historic District. This is in the Back Bay Historic District. There are many positive attributes to this project. So we like the project. We don't like the PDA. So we would suggest that you maybe table it or do something so that you don't approve a PDA here. For one thing, the zoning of the choice of an acre is really not accurate, I don't think. I would not count this as an acre. It includes a building that is not really part of the project.
30 seconds, Jack.
Okay. And as you know, using a PDA to avoid legal appeals is an inappropriate justification for a development process. So we strongly suspect that's a motivation here. So we support the use of a zoning variance because it's clear, maybe two or three sentences, and you'd have your variance. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Jackie.
Okay, Martin, go ahead.
Thank you, Commissioners, for the opportunity to give testimony on this project. My name is Martin Reta. I live in the Back Bay. I'm Chair of the Neighborhood Association of the Back Bay, and I could say that supporting what my colleague Jackie Essien has said, we've had extensive discussions, not only involving the the Development Committee within NAB about this project. And actually, we've been very impressed with what the proponent has agreed to do and the way in which they reached out to the community. But the sticking point, quite frankly, is the PDA. And this sets, if this PDA is granted, it sets a very dangerous precedent because I agree with those who have testified that the justification for a PDA is simply not there. There's been an artifice employed to meet the minimum one acre requirement. There's been an artifice employed to meet the minimum one-acre requirement. And the project, while I don't say it's trivial by any means, doesn't certainly rise to the level of complexity of other projects. And we're very concerned about the use of a PDA in the historic district of the Back Bay. What kind of a precedent that this might set. And we understand why this is being proposed. And it also opens the door to who knows what will happen down the road with the PDA. It's described as a transparent zoning mechanism, which is a funny word to use in this context, transparent, because in fact, it's entirely up to the owner of the project or the developer and the BPDA then to decide whether or not something that they may want to do down the road in fact be approved. So again, you know, the project's great, but please approve it, not with a PDA, but through using the standard zoning process, variance protest. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Martin.
Those are all the raised hands I have. It's Jim.
Thank you, Jeff.
Oh, hold on.
Okay.
Nope. Yeah, that's it. Nope. Pam Beal, go ahead, Pam.
You're there, Dan.
Go ahead, Pam.
Hello? Okay. I'll start again. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. My name is Pam Beal, and I'm a member of the IAG for this project. And I'm here to indicate my strong support for this development. Trinity Financial is engaged with the community, listened to the issues, and has proposed a wonderful transit-oriented residential development that will create much-needed affordable housing in the Back Bay neighborhood. Lastly, I also believe that the benefits and mitigation benefits that this project will bring to this end of Newbury Street does warrant the use of a PDA. Accordingly, I urge you to approve this project this morning, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Pam. Is that it, Jeff?
That is it. Thank you.
Okay, we'll close out this portion of the hearing and enter our business session. Questions, comments, motions?
Jay, I just want to comment that I think Sean Regan noted that the Windsor condominium included ninety-two units, which, you know, I take that to mean that if even half of those residents supported it and they could overall represent, but if they all supported it, which is, I think, what he said, that's a fairly significant amount of support, as well as an IAG support. So I hear the comments on the use of a PDA, and as a Commissioner, I would I would want to just put on the table that just because there might be one PDA that's approved, it doesn't set a precedent. It's all project-specific. And so I just wanted to make those comments because that's what I was thinking as I listened to the comments from the public.
Yeah, Jill, Michael Nichols, I would echo that. I mean, the some of the stranger opposition we've gotten today, folks saying that they are supportive of the project but don't like the device being used. We heard a presentation from the BPDA that it's an appropriate device to use. In the context of opposition to the project, those expressed, especially by the initial two attorneys, other than a passing reference to a perception of insufficient community benefits, there was no rationale provided for why the project is inappropriate or out of scale with the neighborhood. So it appears that there is broad alignment around, you know, the project being good for the neighborhood, and I'm supportive.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion that we approve map amendment application number seven-seven-one, development plan for Plan Development Area number one-fourty-five, four-fifteen Newbury Street, Back Bay, map one, Boston proper.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion on the motion? Harry, number one, roll call. Jill Hatton?
Yes.
Michael Nichols?
Yes.
Michael D'Mella?
Yes.
Nelson Arroyo?
Yes.
David Ma?
Yes.
Aisha Miller?
Yes.
Ricardo Ostich?
Yes.
I vote yes. That's eight-nothing. Congratulations. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff, next meeting.
Next meeting is February fourteenth.
I will not be here, Jeff.
Okay.
I'll be en route driving from Florida back to Boston.
Oh, boo hoo.
So probably massively hungover.